Don't just pretend it's a restaurant. You gotta, you know, you gotta try. And I think, I think they, they, they understand.
I will say this, from 2010 and moving forward, we've seen a lot of improvements in the Palms. I mean, when we started this in February, one of the biggest issues was, from Main Street, it looked like it wasn't even available. It wasn't an option. The curtains are down, you can see inside. The doors are open, there's open signs. There's a lot of welcoming at the front. There wasn't a person at the hostess stand, but there's a hostess stand to indicate, hey, if you want to eat, here's where you go. So there's some steps that have been going forward. We've been making progress. It's just taking a while to get there. And we want to make sure that not only is this a successful restaurant, but that you guys are taking advantage of the community and helping the community grow in Main Street and making Main Street a happy place to be.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious. And I know that Commissioner Edison said it. We've been dealing with this. And all of a sudden, 10 days ago, a light bulb clicked. What was going on in December, November, January? I mean, we've been dealing with this for a year. I'm not completely convinced that this shouldn't be just a private social club. I don't think they understand that it's supposed to be open to the public restaurant. We've been kicking this can down the road, year after year, month after month. And now, I don't know when the light clicked on, but where was everybody on November 19th? Where was everybody with all these meetings? All of a sudden, they're here tonight. I'm just not buying it. I'm sorry, I'm just not buying it. We've been doing this, spending a lot of time with city staff, with the commission on this. And I mean, i- if we're gonna continue this thing, you guys, I mean, I, I'm talking like 30, 60 days. But I don't think this is meant to be a restaurant. It's probably meant to be a social club, which, if that's the case, then we need to go back to the drawing board and figure out what we need to do so that this isn't popping up every two months with a bunch of continuances and we're gonna make it better. I, I, I'm just saying, I just don't know if this thing is ever gonna be a restaurant. I mean, I've been driving by that place for years. The curtains finally got opened, but they were pried open. They weren't open because that's what people want. So maybe we should maybe take a different approach to this whole thing and say, hey, maybe this thing isn't supposed to be a restaurant. Maybe it's supposed to be something else. And if that's the case, does it even work on Main Street? So that's kinda where I'm at, guys.
Well, to be fair to the applicant, the last time we met, we were short commissioners. So we didn't have the benefit of the full panel.
Yeah. Which gave them more time, honestly.
Yeah.
It actually gave them more time than, okay.
And also, when you use the word trying, to me, it sounds a negative word. Because instead, we are going to operate as a restaurant. No, we're gonna try to operate as a restaurant. So in essence, maybe there's a possibility that you're not gonna operate as a restaurant. So that's why I said, I need to be convinced that that's actually what's going to be happening. Because like everyone has said, it's, it's been going on for a long time.
And, and we were told that they are gonna operate as a restaurant. And that's why they're taking some steps, spending some money, making some improvements, and I think making some good changes to operate as a restaurant. And, and for your comments, Mr., is it Emros?
Moros.
Moros, I'm sorry. We only got involved a week or two ago. I can only tell you what we've observed and what we've done. Prior to that, I'm not even gonna go there. You know, they have trust in us, I have trust in them. We made it very clear how this is gonna work moving forward. I don't wanna waste their time and their money. They know that. So I think them lawyering up, them getting some other professionals on their team, I think is a, is a very good sign.
And I do know, with one of the past meetings with the city council, they discussed how they want Main Street to kind of grow and have more, because we have this great venue over here. And we're trying to have people stay here in El Cajon. So the more businesses that we have on El Cajon Boulevard that are inviting and that are part of the community, hopefully that will, you know, you can kind of bank off other people once we do kind of invigorate the downtown a little bit more. So then you can get more people and the restaurant can be successful. Because we want it to be successful, but we need Main Street as a whole to be what the envision is of the city of El Cajon.
Sure.
Anyone else? Close public hearing. Oh, anybody else? Was there any more speaker cords?
If you guys wanna hear from the operators, they're happy. I told them, I said-
Do you have anything you would like to share with us?
Would you guys wanna say anything?
We don't bite.
That's fine.
This is Frank. I think you might have met Frank. He's a gentleman that lives in Riverside. Comes down here once in a while. Said, that's not gonna work anymore. You've gotta, you've gotta stay involved. And I think you heard them tonight of what they wanna hear from you in terms of your commitment to operate this place as a restaurant.
Yes, we are. Okay.
So let me understand. David Malikyar is the property owner?
Yes.
And you are the restaurant owner?
Yes.
Okay. So you have a sublease?
Yes, I do.
Under him? Okay. That's a relationship that you have? Okay. All right.
And how long have you been subleasing with the- from the whole time?
It's been about two years.
Okay.
Yeah. It's about two and a few months now.
Okay. That makes more sense then.
So what is the, in your opinion, what is the purpose of this, of the lease? What is the property? What, what are you guys trying to do there?
We're operating as a restaurant. When I told them, just a restaurant, that doesn't work. The banquet hall site, it kinda helps out a lot, that if we can have one every week as a banquet hall. We are operating as a restaurant. We did a lot of cleanup. When I took over the place, I mean, the front was a lot more worse. I didn't know, to be honest with you. I didn't know. Then we start talking to know what he's like. My understanding was clean the front. We did open the door. We did put the light on. We did. Our main interest is in the back. So I tell you, 90% or 95% of the time, my customers, they come in from the back, not the front. You guys wanna see the front, and we're doing that.
So, I mean, to me, so it's, it, let's not call it what it isn't. It's a, it's a great place for community members to come in. They love coming there. They come in through the back. They know it as, as a hall. They come there, they play their games, they do their things. We, we approved many of them in, in the 2000s. So what, so what we're saying is, I think, you gotta have two operations, it sounds like. You gotta have a welcoming front off the, where people that don't know anything about you can walk through the front door and order food. Right? And say, hey, go take your family here. It's a great place to eat. I go to Taste of Damascus all the time. I love that place. I know it's a restaurant. You know, the problem is, is no one knows it's a restaurant. I understand the, the operation where you're probably paying your bills from comes through the back door. Right? So somehow, you gotta make that work. We've been trying to, to get that to happen for quite some time. And it sounds like maybe now it's starting to click a little bit. But you can see, it needs to be a benefit to the front. The front door needs to be, you know, there as well for benefit to the community and for you guys as well. You know what I mean? If it's run as just a social club through the back door, then, you know, that's not what the CUP is stating.
It's not a social club. I don't know why I thought it's Stefan. I couldn't come one time in November and I told them to come in with my partners. And, and that happened. The people still come in as a restaurant. They come in from the back. Still, they come in. That's where the parking lot is. That's how people, they're used to it. It's not, it's not me. I can't tell them where to park. There's no parking in the front. So people go around and they park and come in from the back door. So that was my point, you know? But we did clean the front. I mean, you can drive by right now. There was not even one or two parking lot empty. Everybody parks in the back. And it doesn't make sense like for them to walk all the way to the block and come back from the Main Street.
Sure.
But I get it. You guys want it to look good. It looks nice, and that's what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then you said something about putting up a partition. Are you, are you in the process of doing that? So to separate the spaces so you could potentially-
That was the idea that they give us. We're gonna try to work on that. Yeah.
Okay.
Did you communicate that with staff? That's your intention to make a partition? Because I, that would be like a tenant improvement plan, right?
The only thing- Yeah.
Yeah.
Fold and unfold.
Okay, so there's a movable partition?
Yeah.
I see what you're saying. Now, that makes, that makes sense. That makes sense. That makes sense.
It's just like if Saturday night, we have a wedding or engagement, we can't, if, I mean, there's, if your wedding is there, you don't want other people to be there. Right? So yeah, we booked that for them, even if it's like 120. And my capacity is, let's say, 250. I can't just like, okay, I'm gonna put a wall and have other customers come in. It's just, I would love to do, that's like double income. Why not? Yeah, but those nights, we'll have a sign. We're just like thinking about it. We'll have a sign that we say we're closed this day for this event, so people will know. It's just, we're having three doors. It's kinda hard, trust me. I have other businesses, I know how it is. It's just, the parking lot's in the back. And it's like, there is no way you can park in the back and come to the front. Then, I mean, you can drive by. You have to go all the way around and come to the front. You know? Our main customers, they're walking in a big, like a back parking lot. Hardly ever, there's a parking lot in the front. And then the nights of a car show, a lot of people do park. And our parking lot is not even mine. I'm renting that, I'm paying every month for a parking lot from Mr. Oscar. He's here. I'm renting the parking lot from him for our customers.
If I may clarify, Chair, just as far as the guidance that I've given to the operator. What we've talked about is, related to a partition wall, was to, you know, not make any physical improvements, come in and talk to staff. Let's, let's look at the floor plan. Let's see how this is gonna operate. Let's see how it relates to the conditional use permit. So we've, we've advised not to make any changes so that we can make sure it doesn't require a building permit. Like you said, there's not any fire exiting type issues that we need to look at, whether or not it's consistent with the CUP. So we would be open to those discussions, but we would need to meet and, and look at those floor plans and, and decide what path forward there would be.
Okay. Perfect.
Well, I've, I've been in many restaurants where in the front, in the frontage, there is no parking. And the only parking is in the back. But people see it from the front. Then they go around the alley or the back, and then they come in through the back door. But they do have both entrances. You can come in from, from either side. And currently, there's two that I've been at in El Cajon Boulevard and San Diego. There's one that I've been at that that's the situation. So that's, to me, that's not unusual to have two entrances and two exits in a particular restaurant. You just have to advertise and have people know that the restaurant is there. And eventually, maybe have a sign in the front, parking in the rear or in the back, whatever the case may be. So, and very successful restaurants at that. Yeah. So insofar as just having, just a hall, there's several in El Cajon, coupled in Magnolia Avenue. But the downtown area, I don't, I don't think that the zoning allows that right now. Because they want pedestrian people walking by. The restaurant will be in a vibrant area where it looks more cosmopolitan and so forth. So that, that probably would not be a, a fit with the, with the city's vision of the downtown San, El Cajon. So the question remains is, are we gonna meet again? And go through this again?
I have one question, a business question. How many people do you think visit your restaurant on average in a week?
I gotta ask my partners. I'm not there. So I can ask them. If you can, just give me a minute, please.
Absolutely.
So without any events, I would say probably about 300 people. 300 to 300 people a week.
That's a fairly busy restaurant.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious. Because I, I want to help my fellow commissioners understand. We keep hearing about whether it's a club or a restaurant, and the, the idea is that the number of times you're open as a restaurant versus the percentage of time you're used as a banquet hall has to meet a certain ratio. And you are doing business. You've got 300 customers a week coming in for late lunch, early dinner, late dinner, past my bedtime, whatever.
It was never a private club, believe me. I don't know why, the previous owner, when I told him just to come in and see what was going on, because I bought it from him. And, yeah.
It, it, it's probably best that we keep hearing from you.
Okay.
So thank you for coming back.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other?
One more point I wanted to make, just because I didn't hear anybody else say it.
Step up to the microphone.
I'm sorry. I apologize. One point I wanted to make, because I didn't hear anybody else say it. It was that I believe that Frank and Mr. Alvy have been in direct communication, as he mentioned, for quite a while, even before we got involved. And he's been very transparent about the number of events, what is scheduled for the next couple months, what type of events. So they're truly trying to work with the city. Right? And we can only help, that we can help that, you know, get better.
Thank you.
Yes, so I'll just add, I'll do that to say that Frank has been very accessible. When I sent him an email asking for more information, he's been responsive. He's taken a lot of the recommendations that I, or ideas that I have given to him, as well as providing the schedule as, as I had requested. So if the planning commission were to be open to a further continuance, I think staff would recommend a short timeframe, as Commissioner Moros had indicated, you know, approximately maybe 60 days. And then we continue to request that the applicant provide schedules. So it's very clear when the restaurant's operating, when the banquet hall's operating, so that staff can continue to monitor that on a, basically a, you know, business night approach, where we are going by to confirm that the restaurant is operating, it's not a banquet that's going on. And then we'll continue to monitor that for approximately the next 60 days. And then we can report back to the commission, if that's the commission's desire.
I would like to say, would, if that's the direction that the commission goes, I can't give you, you know, attorney advice, but I would encourage you not to have anybody speak other than the applicant or your attorney. Because having a third person, it's gotten very convoluted, at least for me. And I'm having a real hard time with this right now. I'm, I'm gonna be very upfront. It, it seems like it's been a very slow walk. But I would encourage you to have either your attorneys or yourself and not somebody who's not directly involved.
My understanding is, right now, you're not operating as a restaurant? Currently, okay.
They are operating as a restaurant.
You are.
That was what I asked. They have 300 customers a week.
Right now, you have 300 customers a week? Okay.
That's why I asked.
So would you consider that you're fully functional right now?
Oh, yeah. I'm open as a restaurant and a banquet hall.
Okay. You're fully functional. Okay. Thank you.
We're ready to close public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you coming.
Unknown, in fact, I would like the three speaker cards from the three folks who spoke. I have nothing in addition to that.
I move to close public hearing.
I think I was a bit late. Can we start over?
Please vote.
A motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right. If you don't mind. I, I think Darren's suggestion and Noah's suggestion of setting 60-day limit is a good one. If we are going to continue with Frank Garmo helping them understand every condition, 60 days should be enough to complete the tasks that they've started. In the last year, I have seen improvement. We've had some confusion, but they should be able to get it all clarified and get it all done. The restaurant is working. The front end is a lot cleaner, a lot more open than it was a year ago. The biggest confusion we have with this is that, for a long time, it looked like, from Main Street, there was nothing there. And now there's open signs, there's open doors, you can see in the windows. So I think personally, 60 days to get everything in compliance, that's it. I think that's doable.
Yeah, I agree. The revocation would, we'll give it 60 days because, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's an active place. And I would not wanna see it be vacant for another year or other things happen. So we need to give them a shot, I agree. But I really think it's important that they work, like you said, with, with Garmo and Garmo on that. Thank you for getting involved. Thank you for being a part of this community for as long as you guys have. But I think it's just, yeah, it's, it's time. I suggest that we all go there for dinner in the next 60 days.
And if I may, just to add for the motion maker, staff would request approximately 60 days. The goal would be not to continue it to a date certain. Staff would renotice the hearing so that surrounding property owners would be aware of the, the upcoming date. And then hopefully, we can schedule that with other public hearing items.
Yeah, and especially since it's February, 60 days would land it on a Sunday.
And just so, I know what we're doing in 60 days. What is gonna be our metric? What are we looking for in the next 60 days? We're seeing improvement, although it's been like a slow walk. I think we can agree on that. It's been a slow walk. What metric are we looking at here?
Full compliance with the CUP.
Well, that's what we've always been looking for. But they, they've been out of compliance. But, but, well, the optics appears to be out of compliance. I would just say, what metrics are we looking for in the next 60? What do we wanna see?
Are you asking us a question?
Yeah. What do we wanna see? Yeah, I probably wanna see that if, I probably wanna see that, that because it's such a big space, that the partition is in place, so that when you walk in, it feels like a restaurant. I have no problem if they have to shut the restaurant down to a banquet. Lots of restaurants do that. I wouldn't have a problem with that. I probably wanna maybe have them come back with a schedule. You know, maybe, hey, here's when our banquets are gonna be. Because we won't know, right? Maybe we walk down the street one day and we're like, wait, what's going on? I thought this place was a restaurant. And there's banquet. So maybe they could forecast, you know, what their schedule looks like for being open as a restaurant versus banquets. That would probably be helpful. Or any other events.
A question for staff. Is banquet hall viable at that location?
I think it goes back to the, the history of the CUP with the city council. So the, the issue was, when it was approved as a restaurant, it was ancillary banquet hall use only. And then the CUP was revisited when they wanted to shut down the restaurant portion of, of the operation. And they wanted to transform that into adult daycare. That ultimately was, was not approved. And so that's where a lot of the direction from staff and relating to the operation of the restaurant being the primary use has come from. So if they were to come today and say, I just want to amend the CUP in order to be a banquet hall only, we would have to look at that project description and then evaluate that against the downtown specific plan and whether or not it meets those goals. So what council said for the adult daycare use and no more restaurant was that that doesn't meet the goals of what we're trying to achieve in the downtown area. So I think that's my long answer of saying that it's possible, but not likely, that it would receive staff report just to be a banquet hall only. Just because it wouldn't further those goals of activating downtown. That's where, I think it's challenging, where we can continue to work with the operator. Maybe there's a modification to the existing CUP where there's a partition wall. That's one of the options that I've given to them. They haven't proceeded with that to evaluate They haven't proceeded with that to evaluate other options. It's just been, you have to operate as a restaurant and you can't have, you know, it's essentially 15% is ancillary, so that's one event per week. So if you have 52 in a 365-day year, that equates to essentially 15%. So I think we'll have to see now that we have, you know, legal representation for the operator, we can see what happens over the next 60 days. You know, I can promise you diligent oversight of their schedule with, you know, at least two, maybe three days per week, staff going by to see what's happening on the days and confirming that they're, what they're telling us is correct. So I think we can do that over the next 60 days and we'll see what decision they decide to make with regards to the partition, whether or not they want to proceed with some type of CUP amendment, and then we can report back in 60 days.
Okay. Well, I hate to see an empty space, especially downtown El Cajon. I'd like to see a successful business and, you know, we're the Valley of Opportunity as our symbol goes, and I'd like to see that continue. And I don't like to put anybody out of business. I mean, we want business to flourish, you know, I want to see Las Palmas to be full of people, you know, if that is possible. Commissioner Edison's, you know, reservations, I have them as well. However, I like to see the business thrive and go. So I agree with Commissioner Moreau and Circo and everyone else here, hopefully, that this would be an opportunity to get that business going. Insofar as just a banquet hall, that's a double question mark for me anyways. So I would approve of it.
Yeah, well, they've got 300 people a week eating already at the restaurant, so that's approximately 50 people a day.
Right, right.
It's not too shabby.
No, no, it's good, pretty good.
Yeah.
So...
I would like to continue the public hearing to a date approximately 60 days from now and give the applicant and their representation time to complete the tasks set before them to get the restaurant visible, viable, and show us what they've got.
I'll second that.
And motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
All right, keep working with Garmo and Garmo and let's get this thing rolling. Okay. Got 60 days.
Make lots of food.
Almost.
Nope.
We've got another item for consideration. Yes, that's the only public hearing.
We do so. Item six, the one other item for consideration is the election of the planning commission chair and vice chair. So in the municipal code, it indicates that the first meeting that occurs in or after February 1st is when the election of chair and vice chair should occur. The planning commission hasn't had a set policy or procedure, but sometimes it's been one year, sometimes it's been two years. So really, it's at the commission's discretion, but staff would just request a motion and a second, either separately or together, for chair and vice chair.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, it's been a while. I mean, how'd you like being chair, Rebecca? I'll tell you what, you know, I'll make a motion to Commissioner Sotile as chair and Commissioner Edison as vice chair. You'll second that? Okay.
Double check your buttons.
Do it again?
I think one more, Mr. Sotile? I don't see your vote.
Oh, it's red. Okay, I'll do it again.
There it is, thank you.
Okay.
And motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
So as vice chair, we'll teach you how to get to the meetings on Monday mornings.
Yes.
Great.
Oh, adjournment.
Yes, so no additional communications from staff or additional reports. At this time, we do not anticipate a second meeting in February on the 18th. That's the day after the holiday, so, but we will provide an update as soon as possible.
I will second that.
Please vote.
Oh, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
Fabulous, so excited that it...
Congratulations.
I'll see you sometime, maybe March.
What were you doing on TV?
I was here last week.
Yeah. Yeah, you were on TV. They played you like three or four times on two different networks.
Oh, they did?
I was like, first I was just sitting there, I was like...
I heard your voice first, I was like, oh, wait a minute.
See you guys. See you five hours. All right, we'll see you tomorrow. My gosh, that's...
Is it too much to ask for this and picture each night? Just like the... Yeah, like, just like, almost like, you know, they always have surveillance pictures and stuff.
Just a snapshot.
Yeah, just, you know, giving you...
Are you going to post it on the internet?
We're not going to post on the internet. But that'll...
Just TikTok real.
I'm struggling with that, too.
Picture, yeah, for privacy reasons, but a tally, like, hey.
How many people came in on Monday, Tuesday, et cetera? And then on the banquet night, well, Monday's the banquet night, so how many people then just to see ebb and flow of the crowd?
I need to be honest with you. I would business on it, I didn't want to put them on the spot, but I get a comment every number. So it's just me and... It's not a bad thing to give them another 60 days, but they're showing that we really want people. That's what bothers me.
15 years, for God's sake, man. Okay, so when he said that, I made four cents, he said, they've been there for two years. Thank you.
Oh, no. Yeah, we got to find a way. Good night, guys.
Have a good one.
Cheers.
And then he said he had a new one.
Well, I'm sorry, you go back.
Are you still having meetings in the morning?
Yes.
We, I would say, we have allowed the chair to determine when they would like to have the...